December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Putnam County School Board is now in session. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Jane Crawford and the invocation by Mr. David Buckles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your head, please. Our Father in heaven, we come to you at this time to join together to try to find ways to impact in a positive fashion the lives of the young people that are in this county and all of our employees as well and to benefit the future as we try to mold and move into the future for these young people. Father, give us the insight and the wisdom and the heart to know what is best and what we can and cannot do to try to preserve the educational process and improve on our educational processes for all of our young people. And keep our employees, all of our workers and people that we deal with each and every day, parents of our students, please keep them safe, Father God, from this pandemic that we've been dealing with and even their loved ones and extended family as we need your support each and every day as we get up and try to make our world a better place for our young people. And we ask these things in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we are now moving into our presentations. Our presentation today is going to be from Jenkins Middle School, Jobs for Florida Graduates.
Hello.
Hello.
I have some Jenkins newsletters that I would love for one of my students to pass out to you guys as we present. You can kind of be looking at their newsletters. I'm Becky Moats. I am a district graduation coach and one of the site supervisors for the Jobs for Florida Graduates program. I know all of you wonderful people already know a great deal about the Jobs for Florida Graduates programs. But what you may not realize is our middle school students, I'm so, so proud and enthusiastic about our new outreach to our middle school programs. We are building the leadership skills in these young students to bring into the high school setting as they start ninth grade. So all of you that have been in the education system know that so many kids in ninth grade start building their barriers. They make mistakes. It's a transition program. So hopefully now that we're working with them in the middle schools, that transition will go smoothly with goals that they have already set before they step into a high school. We still do have our high school programs as well. So I am going to turn this over to our middle school students. This is the first time that they have done professional presentations, so they're nervous. But we are just so proud of them. One of the things that I want to do in front of all of you before I turn it over is one of the students that you're going to meet today, Mr. Barry Bailey, was able to participate in the JAG National Leadership Academy. And this young man scored the highest score in the nation, number one in the whole United States. And in his part of the presentation, he's going to tell you a little bit about that experience. But we have a certificate for him and he won a Walmart gift card. And this is a good time of year to get a Walmart gift card, so we're very proud of Bailey. And I'm going to turn it over to our wonderful presenters from Jenkins.
Hi, my name is Abigail Nelson. I am a seventh grader at Jenkins Middle School. I am here to tell you about the mission and purpose of our JFG and JAG program. Our number one goal is to build leadership skills in each of us so we can become the future leaders in our community.
Ms. Moats, are you going to be changing slides at all?
Oh, yes.
Could maybe the students stand over here just so, because we want to be able to show this on our TV?
Okay.
And when y'all are up at the podium speaking, would you mind taking your mask down if you don't, if you're uncomfortable doing? Oh, y'all are standing together, never mind.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Christopher. I'm an eighth grader and I attend in the JFG and JAG program at Jenkins Middle School. One of the many things, oh, sorry.
My name, hello, my name is Donald Scott and I also attend the JFG and JAG program at Jenkins Middle School.
One of the many things we have accomplished this year is the Professional Business Letter Unit, where we wrote letters to the Governor of Florida to advocate for funding for the JFG and JAG program.
Some of the things we have accomplished this year in JFG and JAG, some of the projects we have accomplished this year are Feed the Need Packing Event, which we packed twenty-six thousand bags. And we are currently, we are currently, one of our currently projects are the Coat and Jacket Sweater Donation Project.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barry Bailey and I attend Jenkins Middle School. Today, I'll be talking about the National Leadership areas that I was very interested in, which is telling your story, pit survey, climbing up, creativity, military branches and careers. These are the areas that I found valuable that helped me obtain my future goals. In life, in closing, I will give honor to God and thanks to my Nana and Papa for their help. And I am awesome. I am also thankful for the amazing staff at Jenkins Middle that helped me succeed, this great honor. And I'm thankful for Ms. Parnell and Becky Moats that helped me get through all this.
Good afternoon. My name is Mackay Peoples and I'm an eighth grade student at Jenkins Middle School. None of you have heard a little bit about our JFG and JAG program. You may be wondering why we are here in front of you today. We are looking for your help and support with our program. One way that you could become involved in our program is by becoming a guest speaker. I am sure that there are many things that we could learn from you and your business and you could even sponsor some of our members in a job shadowing program with your industry. Another way that we would benefit from you becoming a part of our program is for you to become one of our business sponsors and sponsor our group in order to offset the cost of some of our future activities that we have planned. One example that we have done recently is one of our members was awarded with a twenty-five dollar gift card from Walmart from being the number one student that had the most logged in hours on the Virtual National Student Leadership Academy. Thank you for your time today. Your generous donation will greatly assist us in these endeavors.
We wanted to keep our presentation very short because we know you have a full agenda. But we welcome any of you, if guest speakerships, mentoring opportunities. We have so many great children in our programs and we would love to connect our leaders and achievers of Putnam County to the students who would love to work with them. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Becky.
Yes.
Will these kids, when they get in high school, be able to go right into JFG in their schedule?
No, not as ninth graders, but the wonderful thing about JFG is once they become members of our program, they stay members. So we track them, so that I am their mentor even beyond graduation. I'll be working with them. And I don't know if all of you know this, but like the students who graduated last year, right now, based on all of the tracking that we have to do with this program, we are one of the very top, it's called positive outcomes. We are one of the top in the whole United States. Our graduates last year are ninety-six percent in positive outcome programs. So college, full-time jobs with retirement, medical benefits, military. I have seven of my graduates who've already enlisted with military. And many of our business partners right here in Putnam County, and I can give you Solaris as an example, and the Ark of Putnam is another wonderful example. Students that go through our program are automatically granted interviews if they so choose to do that. And all of them that chose those fields got the job. We have been reported back. They're the best new employees they've had. They've already earned CNAs and Solaris pays for college in the nursing program. So those students have transitioned into the nursing program at St. John's, all paid for by Solaris. And then also the Ark of Putnam does the same thing. So we are very blessed to have such wonderful partners right here in Putnam County.
Becky, you're really, the only thing that's keeping these kids from achieving, it would look to me like, would be them themselves. You guys are just doing a phenomenal job of trying to give them the opportunities they need to just take whatever chances you give them and you seem to be doing an outstanding job. I mean, there's no seem to be. I know what you're doing.
Well, it's exactly what you said. Right now, we are starting the unit on removing barriers. It's called overcoming barriers and we partnered with, y'all all know Dr. Diane Taylor from UNF. She's one of our locals. She's wonderful. She mentors us and she's partnering up with her students at UNF to also mentor them. So she did lessons this past week with two schools and she will be doing lessons with the rest of the group in January on identifying all the different types of barriers in their life. And then we formulate SMART goals in order to systematically remove those barriers.
What they're learning here are skills that they could pass on to their peers. They could go into Sunday School classes at church or in the community at different venues and talk to groups of kids and tell them that there are opportunities out there, but they gotta, they gotta do it themselves.
Yeah, as of today, we have three brand-new business partners that we formed today in Crescent City because that's one of our missions, to build the programs out in Crescent City and Interlochen. So right now, we have ninety-five business partners that are associated with helping our kids in one way or another. So this is why Putnam County is such a gem, because we are a family and we help, all of us help raise our kids. And this is a program that really does connect. And as I look through, like you've been involved in our program, you've been out and was a keynote speaker. Ms. Crawford, oh my goodness, what a resource you've been for us. Mr. McKinnis is with us almost every single event we put on. Dr. Cerentie, and I could go on and on, you've sponsored our kids and gave scholarships. That is what makes Putnam County so incredibly special. So we appreciate your support. We would not be successful without all of you.
Ms. Moats, could we hear from Mr. Bailey? And could you just talk about what, some of the things you've done to be number one in the nation, some of the activities?
Pull your mask down.
And I actually came and visited your school and they gave me a list, but I'd like for the board to hear that.
And before he starts, I just want to mention, I know you've got a lot of sponsors, but Ms. Bramlett, she's at the top, top of the list. I know, I know.
Ms. Bramlett, our Feed the Need partnership is the counterstone of so much. And I would love for Ms. Bramlett to tell you about the Teen Ambassador Program that she is building in the JFG program. Because not only does it benefit our JFG students, it benefits the entire community.
Yeah.
So after Barry tells about his experience, I would love for Ms. Bramlett to just say a few words.
Barry, tell us some of the things you've done to earn all those points, if you would.
Well, I watch the videos, a lot of videos.
Sounds like me.
Yeah, we kind of had to do that to get our points, didn't we?
Well, the military one, that's what I want to do. So I learned a lot of stuff from it, like.
When?
Just take your time.
Did they talk to you about the requirements to get into the military?
The path you need to be on to be able to be recruited and what branch of the service are you interested in?
Air Force.
Wow.
Austin. Awesome.
So do you do some like service projects or anything like that to earn points?
Tell them about our Feed the Need at Zaxby's because you were one of the stars of that. Tell them what you did.
What I was trying to tell you, you don't realize it, but you guys are leaders. You all need to be able to tell us what you do.
Well, they're getting there. They're babies.
He's eighth grade.
Yes, they are. So we were paying to Zaxby's on Giving Tuesday and he was instrumental on, you know, they were out there, you know, advocating for Feed the Need, but not only, okay? And I have to say this, I went to Washington last December with the JFG group, okay, as a chaperone for Ms. Moats, okay? So I was so impressed with Putnam County students because they literally competed. So for him to win this this year is phenomenal because all of our kids, most of them had not flown, been to a big hotel, been to big town, they held their own with a couple thousand students from across the nation. I was never prouder than our students because they represented Palatka, Florida, top-notch. So if he's won this award, that is amazing because they have to do, the competition was very extremely nerve-wracking. Our kids were probably like bells plucking in their head. But they pulled it off and, you know, we should be very, very proud of them.
Yeah.
You know, as far as the Teen Ambassador stuff goes, one of the things that I've been working on for almost two years is building awareness in our community with teens that it's okay to be hungry. And so JFG fell into that because I'd already been business partner with them. But that program basically fell into exactly what we needed. And the way the Palatka High School is, they have like a grocery store set up. So they don't take the bag home, you know, at the end of the day, at Friday, they go in, they go shopping. So like over the last couple of weeks, I was over there three times. We want students that if they recognize children in their neighborhood or other student friends, that they take stuff for them. So this is a big, a big step for these kids because they're stepping out and not only are they doing their work to achieve, you know, just the community involvement. All the middle schools and the other high schools now are on board with JFG. So we're instilling pantries in each one of them right now and that's going to be a huge. I know most of y'all know Stacy Cook. Two days before he died, he sent me a video of a testimony of a child eating grass on the play yard at Crescent City High. I heard about it through somebody sitting beside me at church and wanted to know why we didn't have food in Crescent City. And I said, because there's not enough of me and, you know, they're just not in the program. So I reached out to him. He gave me a testimony by video that we video on Giving Tuesday and on the Putnam County School, I appreciate that affiliation you're doing. But he told about the hunger in Crescent City and how he reached out and he started bringing peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. So these teens, however many, that are going to be in each one of these middle schools and high schools will be a voice for hunger in our community. And that's really a goal that I have played for two years, have worked with, not just as a partner and I'm not necessarily, some of these businesses have better partnerships as far as job things. But it's just, I go to the schools, I mentor, talk to them about business, you know, and also this is a program that we just want to be very, very proud of our community.
Well, it takes a lot of courage for them to come stand up and talk in public. And I want to thank you for doing that. I know I called you out, you know, right off the cuff, but we're very proud of you and you're representing Putnam County well, so thank you.
And I want to say this about Barry, his Nana, the one he thanked is out there, she called me, both his grandparents served in the military as well.
Wonderful.
And so, you know, he come, there she is waving out, that's Ms. Mildred Davis. But what makes Barry's situation so much more incredible is right at the beginning of the National Student Leadership Academy, his great-grandfather, who lived with them, passed. And he was in their home. He still, it was his goal that he wanted to do every workshop that he could and get the most out of that. So even though they didn't get sleep and there was, you know, all of those kind of services that they had to work around, he still made it his mission to do all of those. And he's a distant learning student in our JFG program for so, so someone that's online to do so well and he never misses a class. So we're just very, very proud of what he's done.
So could we ask you and the students and our board chair to stand out here if we can take a photo?
Well, Donald wanted to say one quick thing to you. He whispered to me, he had something he wanted to say. And I don't know what it is, but I'm sure it's important.
Well, I guess. Okay, I want to like share my story. Like before I was a JFG student, I was always smart, but you know, I was influenced by bad behavior. I had to, I had to, I had to get right. But and JFG, it helps you a lot because you're not, it's not only the teachers mentoring you, it's the students too because we mentor each other and I like that about JFG. It helps me focus more.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
I would love to have a picture with y'all. That would be fabulous. I hope someone's going to take pictures.
Alicia here.
Would you like a personal picture?
I'll take it. You chop her head off.
Yeah, I'd be terrible.
Ms. Clayton has my photo.
Ms. Crawford, you got to come down. No, it's the board chair. They can see me back here. Oh, I took my mask off.
Thank you, everybody.
Grandmother's coming here.
Oh, nice, nice. And there's an auditorium of students from Jenkins with Ms. Drew and some other ones that were just so excited y'all invited us, so thank y'all.
And she was telling the stories, right?
Yes. What I wanted to say, in this program, I've been out of school over forty-five years. I was seventeen years old when I got my first job in a program like this.
Wow.
I worked as a credit union and a ranch manager. My senior year, I didn't need any credits to get through school because of a program like this. It is wonderful. The job that I got at seventeen years old, I did it for thirty-two years and retired early, had a nice income. It gave me goals. It set me on a pedal so that I could grow it. And I enjoy it. And I'm very happy to know that I have my grandson here who can be part of this program to make growth in himself and others.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Who's right there, if that's okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, board members. We appreciate y'all so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. JFG is such a good program, so many positives. Now we're into our public comment. We have two. Our first person is Lakeisha Session.
Hello, I was told that the item was going to be poll, that I wanted to speak on.
We're going to close the door.
I was told that the item was going to be poll, that I was going to speak on, so not to speak on it.
Okay.
Randy, you want to, that's going to be, I think that's going to be later on.
Let's, can we, Charlie, can we go ahead and pull the item now?
The board chair could allow for a public comment now or a public comment when the item in particular is being discussed.
If you can hang on just a few minutes, Lakeisha, we'll pull it in a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And our next one is Nancy Donahue on schools and COVID.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Donahue. I don't need that. I got a big mouth. I'm a Putnam County resident. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a Putnam County resident. I live in Interlochen. I'm retired from US and I'm also, I was a teacher there. I'm also a retired nurse. I'm nervous. I'm used to students I'm not talking to.
It's okay.
School going, excuse me. I was a member of the community three years ago when I had a calling with one of your signs in front of Interlochen Elementary School. So as I was finishing my master's degree, I decided that I'd go ahead and I'd work part-time. I fell in love with the school system, the children and the teachers of Putnam County. I currently work at Palatka High School, Price Middle School, Interlochen Elementary School, Melrose Elementary School, Acoilla Elementary School. And I am blessed every day that the phone rings and they ask me to come help. I have been your full-time teacher at Palatka High School for your health sciences when your teacher abandoned her position. I am currently COVID subbing for a teacher that went out in Melrose Elementary. I lost my job March fifteenth when you closed down. I understand what happened to our school system and as a nurse, I applaud you. As a citizen of my community, I applaud you. I applaud my teachers. I applaud the students for how we have reacted to this. I have been frontline watching day by day as our teachers, our maintenance staff, our students step up and run two school systems. We run an online school system and we run a physical brick and mortar school system. And God bless you. What you have achieved since this has happened is awesome. And as a citizen of this community, I want you to know it. I want you to know that the teachers in all those schools, okay, have stepped up a hundred and fifty percent. They give love. They give food. They give nurturing. They give an education to these children. They love the families, each one of them. If the people don't have something, we give to them. I am one of many workers that are here to support you, to support our schools. We live in Putnam County, like she said before, this teacher, okay? We are an awesome county and I'm here to support you. And I want you to know, as boots on the ground, working for you through ESS, I'm Ms. Nancy, they all know me. The kids all know Ms. Nancy, okay? I am there to love them and help you. Please know we do a fabulous job. You do a great job. They do a great job. And our kids are learning under these horrific situations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, it is so nice to hear a very, very positive comment. Thank you so much, Ms. Donahue. Thank you.
It's my pleasure. Thank you all for doing what you do and may you have a blessed Christmas and happy New Year.
And you also.
May me have a few words of your time.
All right. Have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have nothing under the superintendent's emergency powers, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Ms. Gillyard, do you have anything to pull?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to pull G1.
G1?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buckles?
That was what I was going to pull.
Okay. Ms. Crawford?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Mr. McGinnis?
Nothing to pull.
Nothing to pull. So we have G1 that has been pulled. Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus item G1. Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept the consent agenda minus G1 and seconded by Ms. Gillyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Gillyard?
Okay, I'm looking for Mr. Hedstrom. Oh, okay, you hired him. All right, um, okay. Do you want to come now and address it, Mr. Hedstrom? We did have an opportunity to speak and we're the same.
It's my recommendation on the student TC that we not go with the expulsion until after first semester. And the reason being is the student has passing grades. And if we were to do this, that would knock out the grades. She's, well, they are on option two at this point. I spoke with the mother this morning. We're working on getting a hotspot because they're having issues with internet issues. So we're working on that. And she can salvage those grades, then she can, the expulsion will start second semester and that she can go through homeschool and possibly go into Putnam Vir- Virtual and then save those credits that she's got. And I don't want to see her lose that, that she had for the first grade. She made a mistake. But anyway, that's my recommendation that I'm recommending. And then I will also work with the family, with the mental wellness councilman, also mentoring to where we could possibly get her back in the school system as soon as we possibly can versus going through, and we've done that with other students before also.
For clarification, so now we're in, it would have been the remainder of this school year and all of the following school year, I was going to recommend with all of that that you're doing, that the expulsion just covers this school year. Twenty, what are we, 19?
Twenty.
Twenty twenty-one. Yes. And then be allowed to return based on what you are providing, the mental wellness, and that the grades are as they should be, that she be allowed to re-enter her sophomore year TC.
The state law has certain ramifications. If, and I don't, I don't know if Lakeisha is guardian of this child, so I'm hesitant.
No, her mother's here.
Okay, the mother's here. There are certain things that Randy and Mr. Hedstrom apprised me of. We talked prior to the meeting and that has to be done according to state law. And he is trying to work within those parameters to find an avenue to keep the child where she doesn't lose the grades and she can work her way back in, you know, provided she doesn't go and do something crazy on school campus or go back on campus prior to that time. So we would hear back.
All right, well, I got a misunderstanding then, because that's not the explanation I got.
Well, what we would like to do is, my, my main concern is this first semester. I don't want, normally y'all would.
Lose these credits.
Yeah, I want her to get her credits. And that's really on her and, and her parent to make sure that she does her best to save those credits at that point. And then after that, we will, she will be able to go through homeschool and be able to get to Florida Virtual, you know, the flex part of it, finish out second semester with that, with that's not going back to brick and mortar, that is being able to go online. And we're working on providing computer, providing hotspot and that. And then at that point, like Ms. Gillyard says, we will work with them, with the mentors and the information that we have from mental health of them actually coming back. But that's, that's the work that needs to be done before then.
So at the end of the year, we can address whether that second year, that's my concern, that it goes into another year.
Yeah, that's my concern. I don't.
Do we have your assurance that it will go before the, whoever it goes before, expulsion committee or whatever, that they will look at this situation again?
Yes, yes. We have, we have done that before.
Because I think you can meet all the parameters in a year. Yes.
Yes.
Well, basically, as a board, we're directing Mr. Hedstrom and the superintendent to, to follow what Mr. Hedstrom is trying to lay out, to, to preserve the credits where this child is at this point and to find an avenue to re-enter that child in brick and mortar as soon as we can and follow the new safety laws of the state of Florida that if a child strikes an adult, they have to mandatorily be.
But that's not what the.
No.
That's not what the item says on the consent agenda.
Well, all right.
But David, you see what I mean?
I was just saying, I was just saying, we're gonna direct him to do that and come back.
We can, we can hold the item because really what I'm asking is that she not be, the student not be expelled.
Okay.
Until after January, which will be the next semester.
So we're tabling this item.
Yes. You, you can, you know, I'm not, but what I, I just wanted to make sure that we actually give the student the opportunity through option two to finish out first semester, where she gets to keep the grades if she does what she's supposed to do. Then it will be my responsibility, along with the mental wellness counseling, with the mentoring, and also on the parent and the student to finish out second semester as best as can so we can possibly look at bringing them back. And that means counseling.
Yes.
Has to be. If she doesn't show up for counseling, that's gonna be where I can.
Strike against.
If the mentor goes and there's not appropriate positive feedback from the student and parent, then that's a chance and opportunity they miss it coming back.
Is she on option two right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe, I believe we will be bound to make a up or down decision on expulsion at some point in January, but I think.
Right, but not right now.
Randy can, he, he will, he's, he's looking at avenues to soften this, to make it comply with Florida law and at the same time preserve her integrity of her academic progress. So that's what we're interested in.
Okay, well, then I'd like to make a motion that we.
Before you make the motion, is we gonna allow for the public comment?
Oh, I thought, oh, that's right.
Okay, Ms. Session?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to make a public comment now?
Were you just gonna read your letter? Yes. Okay, well, we've got a copy of that.
Okay.
Well, I kinda like with Keesha, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear you speak. I always love hearing you.
Charlie, what's our next move?
If you would like to provide public comment, now, now is the time to be able to do that. Or if you just wanna submit your letter into the record, you can do that too. Or if you wanna read it.
I'll go ahead and just submit it.
Yeah, since we've got it, it's in the record anyway.
Okay.
If you can ask if there's anyone else to provide comment on this and deny.
Any, anyone else?
Public comment.
Want to provide public comment? Her mother or anyone? No? Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion that we table item G1 and second.
I'll second the motion.
Sandy already did.
Okay, well, I didn't know you seconded it. Okay. Okay, I, I was looking at Randy thinking that we needed to clarify exactly what we're doing, but that's already clarified.
Yeah, I've spoken with him. Yeah, but he and Tony.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford that we table item G1 and a second by Mrs. Gillyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero, so that is tabled.
I would like to thank Mr. Hedstrom and all those who served on expulsion committee for, for having a heart and at the same time following and complying with the law. It's, it's a very slippery slope sometimes. But thank you guys, all of you.
Okay, we are now going out of regular session and into emergency session. Our first item is extension of the specialty floor covering justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Move acceptance.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Gillyard and a second by Mr. Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Our second item is spring 2021 education plan assurances justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Move to accept, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Crawford and a second by Ms. Gillyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item three, professional and technical services, learning sciences, international justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Motion to accept.
A second.
We have a motion to accept by Mrs. Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number four, resolution granting emergency powers to the superintendent, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Move to accept.
Second.
We have, we have a motion by Mrs. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we are out of emergency session and into our regular meeting. We have no unfinished business, no new business, so we move to the reports by the board members, board attorney, and superintendent. Mrs. Gillyard?
Hey, I, I really don't have anything. I just want to ask a question of the superintendent of whom he may designate. Just a quick update on where we are with COVID in our schools and I just.
As far as numbers and that type of thing?
Yes, sir.
Well, right now, we are experiencing uptick and due to the, the impact of Thanksgiving. And we're actually gonna do another public service announcement this week, preparing people for the Christmas holidays. But as you know, we did close, or we didn't close, but paused the charter school, middle school, had to close yesterday for the remainder of the week and go totally online. And it was in today's paper.
Yes, sir.
The idea was they, they had a number of exposures and did not have enough staff to really maintain the brick and mortar. So that could possibly happen at any time with our district schools. And it doesn't mean that we're doing a bad job. It just means we're protecting kids and staff. And we are publishing a daily dashboard now. So you, you can actually see that and you can probably see the uptick in the numbers. But I tell you, we have, our staff is working extremely hard. Tina Foster, as you know, our epidemiologist, just works many, many hours a day just making sure we do the contact tracing. But there is an uptick and, you know, we're trying to deal with it as best we can.
Okay. Are the parents doing what we've asked? Like if the, if the child comes and are they not sending them?
I think for the most part, feel free to jump in. I think for the most part, they're, you know, they may not like it to have their kid at home, you know, their child at home. But I think for the most part, they're being compliant. And we've got a couple of our staff here. I'm sure there's exceptions.
The only thing I would say is we encourage families that if your child does not feel well or is exhibiting those symptoms.
Keep them home.
So please keep them home. Please do not go test them and bring them to school and wait for the test to come back.
Right.
Because we do, we have had that happen where kids are getting results and they're sitting at school. So they were at some point sick enough to go test, but they were well enough to come back to school, which causes a trickle-down effect. But if you're sick, please stay home. That is staff and students both.
Yeah, it's, it's the new.
The new norm.
But we'd never get used to it. And, and that was all. I just, I was just concerned, you know, you hear little things and I just needed to hear it from y'all. And I know, and the parents know, it's nothing that we are doing. We, we don't control this, but thank God, you know, help is on the way and.
But you get, you get a different perspective when you talk, I talked to superintendents all over the nation. And we are so far ahead in combating this. I mean, there's some districts that have not even opened up yet, you know? So I think we are doing, as a, as a district, doing a great job trying to keep kids in school and the ones that can't be in school, providing a quality education online.
I was at EH Miller last Thursday for retirement and I saw one of the custodians with the wand thing. And it was actually, he was sanitizing. The children had gone and it was after school. And so I, I, I know we are, and I know it's going to happen, but just, I, just knowing we have something in place to, to at least keep the impact as less as possible. And so that, that was just my concern. And I needed the parents that are watching to hear it and to know that it takes all of us to make this thing run smoothly. And I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. And I pray God's blessings upon us.
I had a grandchild contract COVID over the Thanksgiving vacation. And, you know, we go, we're all going through it. Everybody's been touched and it's a miserable process. And in some cases, you lose loved ones and that's a, that's a very horrible process. But we're gonna, we're gonna fight through it and get there. And as the lady from Interlochen said earlier, it's, it's not the school board that's doing this. It's those people out there.
In the trenches.
Putting, in the trenches, putting themselves on the line each and every day. And I just am so thankful for the guardians and, and the people we have, the health professionals, Tina Foster and some of the people that the superintendent has, has gotten aligned to coordinate this. It's just fascinating. I, I really hope we have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas holiday for our kids and employees and people can really get, get a chance to think about what's important. And that is our relationship with each other and our families and, and try to figure out ways that we can support superintendent and his recommendations to make our, our schooling better for our students. And I listened to the story earlier about a child eating a rat on the playground. And I have to tell you, I.
Grass.
Grass.
I'm glad you got that straight before you left here.
Yeah, I told everybody.
I listened to that and I said, well, I can remember Charlie Douglas's daddy eating grass on the playground. He would eat grass all the time. But anyway, and your cousin Irving did too as well. But anyway, you know, all of us have, have been in unique situations, but we've, particularly in Crescent City, go, go on school buses in the summertime and feed people in the communities and stuff. But the rat kinda had me. I was looking at.
Do you feel any better? I mean, grass is bad enough.
Grass is wonderful compared to the rat, unless, unless the rat is clean and cooked properly.
Oh, my gosh.
Anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Moving right along.
Okay, Ms. Crawford?
Um, I had the opportunity today to moderate the spelling bee at CLO. I think this is my fifth or sixth year doing it. And it's always so much fun. I get really kinda nervous. And I practice. The kids are so cute and so smart. And they had it set up perfectly in the library this time. All the, all the chairs were six feet apart. They all had on their masks when they were walking past each other. They came up to the microphone. They took their masks down long enough to spell their word. And they just did a great job. So I'm looking forward to judging in the county spelling bee. I think it's toward the end of July, Ju- July, January. So that'll be fun. We talked about Putnam Academy for Arts and Sciences earlier. I think they absolutely did the right thing. I know a lot of colleges closed early. They, they finished early and didn't go back after Thanksgiving because of some situations with COVID. But, you know, they're doing everything they can to try to head off more cases. And I pray that, that we don't have to shut down any schools after Christmas because it very likely.
we don't have to shut down any schools after Christmas, because it very likely could happen, I, I'm afraid there are people that don't take this as serious as they should, we have no control over them, what they do outside of the school system, so we just pray that they do the right thing, I'm very, very excited about the vaccine, I hope I qualify as elderly so I can be one of the first ones to receive it. Well, okay, well, that's, that's good to know, and I want to wish everybody here and in the district, all our students and teachers, a very, very Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year, and we're going to hit the ground running, running when we come back in January, we've got some great things ahead and in our future for Putnam County schools, it's only going to get better as it has done every year since Dr. Surrancey has been our superintendent. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis?
Well, I want to congratulate Mr. Bailey, that was a.
He's adorable.
What a wonderful, you know, what a wonderful program, the JFG program in middle school right now, when I was graduation coach, definitely saw the need for that to jump on board in the middle school, I'm glad to see it there, and I'm just, they, they have everything in front of them, and attended some Ram football, Ram basketball games, got through my ethics training, praise God.
Wasn't it better this year?
And I need to make a public announcement, I forgot to mention, after the last meeting, Miss, poor Ms. Gillyard was thrust into the expulsion committee, and I did not forewarn her about her role, and I just want to publicly make that announcement that I, please forgive me, Ms. Gillyard, that I did not know, that you did not know.
No, I've never done it.
We're going to be chairing the.
Oh, you have to be the chairman?
The, the board member is the chair.
Ms. Crawford needs a dose of that.
No, Ms. Crawford's had a dose, but I didn't remember being chairman.
Well, you would remember.
Well, I did it, it was like my first year, and I cried every meeting.
They probably wouldn't give you a gavel.
Probably.
And I echo what Ms. Crawford said, and about the best thing that you can do for yourself and your family is to stay healthy, then that way physically, mentally, and spiritually, whichever way you choose to do so, and I wish that for everybody in our district and the board.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you.
Back to you, both.
And thank you.
Well, I just have, every year, almost every really holiday season, Ms. Erin Delaney, the art teacher at Crescent City High School, her art students, and she go, and they, they do the window painting at Wind Dixie, so if y'all need to go to the grocery store and feel uplift, uplifted, it's a beautiful mural, snowman, and then there's a Happy New Year with fireworks, and it's, it's just, it's really, it's unbelievable that they can do that, and, and they do it in a day, it's not, you know, I mean, they just get it up. So, I just wanted to say thank you to her and all of her students, because it, it really does, when you walk into the grocery store and you see that huge mural, you just.
Gets you in the mood.
Yeah, gets you in the mood. I also went on our Facebook page and listened to Mr. Hartley's guitar ensemble, it's so neat, the, you know, there can be, I believe you can always find positives, if there can be a positive in the COVID, is the fact that I could listen to this guitar ensemble.
And it's on Facebook?
Yes, and I probably would have never attended that, I don't, you, you should have it just to go on and not read anything, but go to our website. It was excellent, you know, I think that it's like classical guitar, it's, it's wonderful. And I do have one concern, and I worry, I stress over the fact that I feel like South Putnam, and maybe it's like this in West Putnam, our cases are pretty low. Is that the truth? There's nowhere to get tested for these people, we can get food to them, we can do all these things, but we can't provide a convenient place for them to get tested.
That's not good.
And so I do have a concern, because it, you know, if other schools are seeing an uptick, but we're not really seeing an uptick, and so.
We should call the county commission and really get on.
We can inquire about that, or.
They should have the health department go over a couple times a week at least.
I mean, you know, that is, you know, that is, I should probably contact the health department, see if they could set something up with the fire station, because they did at the beginning, they came two or three days, you know.
But they need to come regularly, a couple of times a week.
Where people at least know.
They gotta have the employees to do it.
Here, I'm writing myself a note, okay?
There's nowhere in Crescent City that somebody can come and get tested.
Where they haven't done.
Free charge, or fruitland, or Satsuma.
Bill Thomas Center, then, okay.
No.
I know when my granddaughter was tested positive, I went and had a test, and, and it was like the immediate test, but you pay a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I had to do the last time I flew to see, I got to do that again this week.
And I just.
You need to, because you mingle way out of state.
But I've had it.
I know.
Yeah.
And I, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and certainly a Happy New Year, and I'm really not going to miss twenty twenty a whole lot, so.
Farewell.
Don't let the door, never mind. Mr. Douglas?
I have more to add on the legal department side, I think everything is going well, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you all too.
Thank you, and Dr. Surrancey?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we've had a board meeting since the tragic loss we had at Crescent City.
It was the day of.
The day of.
The day of, yes, sir.
And then the next, that night, you know, we had another tragedy, so, but my heart goes out to the entire community, and they've had their share, you know, heart, heartache over the last couple of years, but just want to commend, especially Mr. Adams and Dr. Shelby for their leadership during this time, and, you know, just bringing those faculties together and the students together, and, you know, they had a vigil, and then the funeral services and that type of thing, so. Want to mention, we talked about the survey for the, the community survey that we provided that's supposed to end today, as a matter of fact, and I just want to bring you up to date on that, as of today, and Ms. France is keeping numbers on this by the minute, okay, she stays on top of this, but as of this minute, one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine responses so far, and of those responses, we've had, almost thirty-five percent are our employees, almost thirty percent are parents and guardians, twenty-nine percent are students, almost four percent are community members, and three percent are business owners and managers.
Oh, I wish that had been higher.
So, what we're going to do is we're actually going, going to extend this through the end of the week, and I actually, I talked to the chamber yesterday, former chair of the chamber right here.
I thought he still was.
He handed the gavel over yesterday, but we did, I did ask them to, you know, through the business community, just try to make sure we get their perspective, and we, we definitely want to hear from as many people as possible, and we encourage anyone that hasn't taken it, be sure to look on our website or our Facebook, and you can, it's about a two or three minute survey.
It's a very well-done survey, too, the way the questions are presented.
Yeah, and, and we're actually, I think next, next month at our next meeting, we'll have a, you know, kind of a breakdown of that, and it'll show you each question, it, it's really disaggregated, so you'll really get an idea of their responses. Also, speaking of the strategic plan, that's going to be a very exciting time for this board, you know, we're really, we're going to take this information, and from that information, we're going to start forming some work groups based on some of the buckets of information that we get, and I'm going to ask, or we will ask each of you to serve maybe on one or more of those work groups, and, you know, we'll just talk about how to process that information, what are some things that we need to do as a district to address that, and again, it's, it's looking at the next five years, and I've told you this before, we've, you know, we've had a five-year plan on our graduation rate, and our plan has been to reach ninety percent, and possibly this week, we should hear from the state of Florida, the twenty twenty graduation rate, which we are projecting unofficially to be right at ninety percent.
Oh, my gosh.
But again, that's a projection unofficial, it's per Renee Lamro, which is pretty accurate, but.
Ms. Crawford will probably eat grass.
But my point is, the last five years, we've, we've had some goals, we've really been accomplishing a lot of those goals, but our next five years are what do we do next, and we've really been focusing on preparing graduates to be college and career ready, and that's what our focus is, so I think it's going to be an exciting process. If you would, check your calendar, and I've talked to some of you individually, but on January the seventh, at two P. M., we're going to be holding a board workshop, and we're going to have, we've got a consultant who's been doing some research around the district, who will be coming back and reporting back to you, and then we'll provide some other information and recommendations at that time, but that will be an extremely important workshop on January seventh. I do want to mention that it's been in the news that our county has adopted, I'm talking about the county as a whole, adopted the latest CDC guidelines, where they have reduced the time of quarantine from fourteen days to ten days, okay? The board, the school district is going to be following suit, but we're going to wait till January to do that, okay? And the reason is, you know, if somebody goes out now, a student goes out now, they'll be into the Christmas holidays anyway, so they will be returning anyway, so we're going to start this, you know, with the Fourth of January, and what it entails is students that would be out ten days, but there would be, there would have to be contact each day to make sure they're not exhibiting symptoms, and then if they are a student athlete, they could come back on that tenth day, but they would not be able to resume their athletic participation for fourteen days, and again, because they can't keep a mask on and, and compete, so that's what the main difference is.
Well, let me ask you this, is this going to run into the semester, the quarantine that, I mean, would we, would they have a way to take semester, do they even give semester exams anymore?
Any, any kind of exams or anything like that, you know, we can, we can make arrangements about that, yeah. So, I do, my, my point is, I want to make sure everybody understands, we're following a line with the latest CDC guidelines, we're just going to bump it back to the beginning of January instead of right now, okay?
That's why we grant you emergency powers.
Yep, so.
Why we pay you the big bucks.
I don't know about that, but, anyway, so I think that's all I have, and thank you for all you do, and we're going to have a, a great holiday, and I can't be more proud to be a part of this district, and everything we've done up till Christmas holidays, it's hard to believe we're here now.
It's unreal.
Yeah, but looking forward to a break. That's all I have.
Hi. Anybody have anything else? We're adjourned.